Okay. We need to ready like go over everybody to the October 26th River Falls City Council meeting. First thing we'll do is stand state of the game.
I'm joined by the United States of America and should be republik for which stands one nation. I forgot it is all for the routine justice forever.
Okay, clear welcome please, Kristi.
Beerside.
Here.
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 Emily.
Here.
We're Seth.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Odie.
Here.
Here.
Okay, next to approval minutes from that four 12 meeting.
I move approval. Second.
First and second, any questions? All in favor?
I'm in my voice.
Okay, next move on to approval of the vote with Mr. Beerside.
Mayor and Council, I move approval of payment of bills with the amount of $1,380,736.89.
Second.
First and second, any questions? All in favor?
I am opposed.
Okay, next move on to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to stand up and talk on? Okay, next move on to, uh, we have 2021 citizen survey results and our management analyst Catherine will give us a little update. Tag team on it like we would have asked. This is your presentation right here. Another chair, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thanks so much for giving me a little bit of time this evening to talk with you about the 2021 community survey results for the city of River Falls. So just kind of a brief overview of what we'll be talking about this evening. We'll first talk a little bit about some background on the survey itself to talk about who conducts the survey on the cities we have and what exactly the survey sets out to measure. We will then look at the methodology to look at how the survey goes about measuring these items. We'll then dive into the results, so we'll talk about what we're seeing as far as ratings on overall quality of life. And then kind of zoom in a little bit and look at some of the strengths that we saw in our 2021 results. So areas that community members are really, really happy with. We'll also look at some opportunities that have come up that community members have brought to our attention. And then we'll wrap up those results by looking at our ratings on government performance, customer service. So essentially seeing how satisfied community members are with the interactions they've had with our staff. And then we will talk about the next step. So now that we have all this information, what are we going to do with it? So to start, the city of River Falls uses the National Community Survey, which is conducted by Polco. So in years past, it has been conducted by the National Research Center. They actually merged with Polco in 2019. So they are now one entity. So technically, we're working with Polco now, but it is really the same folks that we've been working with since we first began conducting the survey back in 2013. So what the National Community Survey is ICMA's preferred provider of community surveys, so just something to note that they are kind of officially endorsed by ICMA. And something really nice about using the National Community Survey as our tool for surveying our community is that not only are we able to kind of look back at our own historical trends and look at ways that maybe our performance has stayed the same on some measures or changed on other measures, but we can also compare our performance with the performance of other municipalities. So essentially, all of the communities, and there are around 600 across the country, that use the National Community Survey formed a really large benchmarking pool. So we can look at our results and compare it with that of other municipalities and kind of compare them in contrast. So essentially, the goal of the survey is really to help cities determine how livable they are according to their residents. And so the National Community Survey basically looks at 10 broad categories of livability that they aim to measure public opinion of through the survey. So they look at economy, so essentially, how well can the community or how well does the community work with, you know, private corporations, nonprofit organizations, other community partners to build a really strong, robust local economy? They look at mobility, how easily can community members get around their community essentially? Community design, utilities and safety, natural environment. They look at parks and recreation, how satisfied are community members with the parks in their community and the recreation programs that are available to them? Health and wellness, education, arts and culture, and lastly inclusivity and engagement. So now that we've talked a little bit kind of about the folks who conduct the survey and what the survey is designed to measure, we can talk just a little bit about how Polco goes about measuring these items. And so essentially, what we started out with back in July 2021, when we began this process with the community survey, was a random selection of 2,700 city addresses. Each of these 2,700 households received a survey mailing, and they were instructed to select one respondent from each household. The only caveat was that this person was supposed to be 18 or older. Beyond that, if you had a household where there were more than one members who were over 18, they were instructed to use the birthday method. So essentially, they were supposed to pick the member of the household who had the most recent birthday. And really, that method is designed just to try to select somebody in kind of the most randomized method possible. So responses were collected beginning July 9th, and that response collection period was open through August 7th, 2021, so just a little under a month. Ultimately, we ended up with a 27% response rate and a final sample of 557 city residents. And the results of the survey were weighted, and Polco did that to try to ensure that our sample was really as representative as possible of the demographic profile of the city. So they used a weighting algorithm to do that, and the main characteristic that we saw affected by the weighting was respondent age. So before the survey results were weighted, individuals in the age group of 18 to 34 were way underrepresented in comparison to how much of the population they actually make up. And then on the flip side, adults ages 55 plus were overrepresented in the survey responses. And so essentially, Polco used that weighting algorithm to ensure that those groups were represented in numbers that were actually pretty proportionate to the amount of the population that they make up. So then lastly, just a couple of items to note regarding the way that Polco has presented our results and the way you'll see them here tonight. And so the first thing, percent positive, you'll see that mentioned a lot and you'll hear me say it. What that means is essentially when we're looking at results for questions, you'll see them often presented as a percent positive. That's the two most positive response options for each question. And so they'll often be combined into respondents answered, you know, 59% positively for X question. You'll also hear similar to benchmark or lower than or higher than benchmark. So when we see similar to benchmark, that means that that particular result was within 10 percentage points of the benchmarking average, which is based on the average of those other communities that use the National Community Survey. When we see lower than benchmark, that means that we were 10 to 20 points lower than the average. Higher than benchmark means you were 10 to 20 points higher. And they do also use the measures much lower and much higher. We rarely have those come up in our results, so they're probably not going to come up much tonight. But just good to know as we kind of go through so that you you have some sense of what those words really mean in terms of the numbers. So now that we've kind of got all that basic information under our belt, we can jump in and actually look at our results. And so first, we'll look at how respondents rated the overall quality of life in the city. So as we can see here in the pie chart, 31% of respondents rated the quality of life excellent and 57% rated it good, which means that 88% of respondents overall rated the quality of life positively. And then we also have some really, really high statistics over here. So 92% of survey respondents rated the city as an excellent or good place to live. 92% also said that they are very or somewhat likely to recommend living in the city to others. And then we had 83% indicate that they are either very or somewhat likely to remain in the city for the next five years. And so those are really, really impressive numbers and then really worth applauding. So now we'll then dive a little deeper and take a look at some specific services within those categories that residents gave particularly high marks to. So first, we have the overall quality of utility infrastructure that received an 82% positive rating from community members. Overall quality of natural environment received 93% positive ratings. Overall feeling of safety also received 93% positive. And the overall quality of parks and recreation opportunities received an 87% positive rating. So looking a little deeper into utilities and public works, you can kind of see some specific services that residents indicated really high satisfaction with. So power, electric and gas utility, that category residents expressed 87% positive feelings. Stormwater management was rated 86% positively. Sewer services, utility billing, street cleaning, all over 80%. So really, really pretty exceptional ratings there for our utilities, our public works, and also customer service and finance who handle our utility billing. So then we also had public safety have a really, really strong showing. So fire services residents rated 95% positively. Police and sheriff services 80% positively. Something to note here is that Polco does group police and sheriff services together. Most likely, they do not kind of using it as an umbrella channel for communities that don't have a police department and just use sheriff services. For communities like us, where we do have our own police department, that's maybe not the best way to group that because then we may have community members, you know, reflecting their feelings, not just about our police department, but also about the sheriff's department in their rating. So just something to note and definitely explain why it's a little bit lower than fire services, but still really high. So still a really, really great rating for for both fire services and police services. And then lastly, natural environment, parks and recreation and library services all had a really, really strong showing. So public library services received 95% positive ratings. So nearly 100%, really, really high. City parks were rated 89% positively. Availability of paths and walking trails 84%. And recreation programs and classes was rated 70% positively by community members. So we can see that is a little bit lower than these other categories. But still means that seven in 10 survey respondents rated recreation programs and classes either excellent or good. So still a pretty, pretty high rating and maybe want to kind of, you know, keep on our minds, but but still want to celebrate for sure. So now that we've talked a little bit about kind of some of those really strong points that came through in the results, we can look at some opportunities that came up that community members can brought to our attention. And so one of those areas was affordable housing. So essentially, survey respondents were asked to rate the availability of affordable quality housing in the city. And our results for 2021 showed 39% positive ratings. And that figure is rated as being similar to benchmark, meaning that we do fall in the statistical range that most of the communities in the benchmarking pool do. But looking at our historical data, we can see that we have gone down a little bit since we started back in 2013. And we had 60% positive ratings in that year and are now down at that 39%. And we did go up five percentage points since 2019, so that could potentially mean that maybe an upward trajectory is coming. It's too early to say, but but that is something to note that we did see a little bit of an increase between 2019 and 2021. Regardless, this is really good information to have as we continue to think about, you know, ways to ensure that we have affordable, high-quality housing options for our folks of all income levels in the city. So another area that residents identified as an opportunity for growth was retail and business options in the city or shopping. And so community members were first asked to indicate their satisfaction with the variety of business and service establishments in the city. And they rated business and service establishments or the variety of them 38% positively, which means roughly four in 10 residents said that they are excellent or good. And as for shopping opportunities, we have 20% of respondents providing positive ratings, which essentially equates to about two in 10 residents saying that shopping opportunities in the city are excellent or good. And so our rating on both of those measures is categorized as lower than benchmark, meaning that we were more than 10 percentage points lower than those other communities or according to the community average in that benchmarking pool. And so these are also really valuable data points to kind of guide us forward as we continue to work hard to bring really fantastic businesses and service establishments to the city and kind of increase the variety of those options for residents and for visitors too. So next, survey respondents highlighted public transportation as another area for growth within the city. And so first, when asked whether they use public transportation instead of driving in the last 12 months, 5% of survey respondents indicated that they had. And furthermore, 20% rated ease of travel by public transportation in the city positively, which is lower than the benchmark. But our results also showed that about 75% of respondents had walked or biked instead of driving in the last 12 months. And that's higher than the benchmark. So kind of two main takeaways from these data points. The first is that although not many community members are using public transportation, we do know that many of them are still finding alternatives to driving. So that's good news on on an environmental level and also a public health level, parking and biking, good for public health. And the second takeaway is that we know that community members feel that it is not terribly easy to get around the city with by using public transportation. And so that information is helpful to have as we continue to think about ways that we can make transportation easier in the city and more accessible for folks. So then the last area that was highlighted by our survey respondents as being a, you know, potential area for some growth was diversity and inclusion. So in 2021, the National Community Survey included new questions. This was the first year that these questions were were on the survey that essentially were aiming to measure the extent that respondents felt their communities welcome value and accept individuals with diverse backgrounds and life experiences. And it is important to note, looking at the wording of the question here, that they specifically asked respondents to evaluate the community as a whole, so not the city government specifically, but the entire community, just something to keep in mind. So we can see here that 60% of respondents rated the community's ability to value and respect residents from diverse backgrounds as excellent or good. 45% positive ratings for the community's ability to attract people from diverse backgrounds to the city. And then 53% positive ratings for the openness and acceptance within the community toward those with diverse backgrounds. So the city is similar to benchmark on all three of these measures. So we are falling in in the range that most communities were for 2021. And because this is the first time that these questions have been asked on the survey, we unfortunately don't have data to be able to look at any historical trends and see if we've seen any changes in the last few years. That's something we'll be able to do in the future, which will be really, really useful. But regardless, kind of having this baseline information as the city explores ways that we can assist the community in becoming inclusive and welcoming and safe for all is definitely, definitely valuable information. So moving on from our opportunities for growth, since 2013, the National Community Survey has asked respondents to answer a few questions about the performance of their city government and essentially their satisfaction with it. So looking at our 2021 results, we can see that we've remained fairly consistent in our ratings on these measures. And so we asked residents about their overall confidence in city government, their perception of the value of services for the taxes they pay, and then their feelings on the overall direction that River Falls is taking. So if we look at our numbers for 2021 versus that historical average that's on the bottom line, we can see that we're really pretty close to that historical average on each of those measures. One to note is overall confidence in city government. That one has has been on a very, very slight downward trajectory. Still pretty close to the historical average with our 55% positive rating in 2021, but it is about seven percentage points off of that historical average. So just something to to kind of keep on our minds as we continually work to kind of boost transparency and accountability and think of new ways to do that. And then the last area of results for us to cover tonight is customer service. So the city of River Falls, since we started doing the survey back in 2013, has included a special question on the survey to essentially engage community members' satisfaction with the staff members of the city that they've come into contact with. And so they are asked what their impression was of the city employee that they've most recently encountered. And as we can see here with the table, as in past years, respondents indicated really high satisfaction in 2021. And so knowledge, 92% positive ratings, responsiveness was 90% and courtesy was 89%. Overall impression was 88%. And something to note is it's really a pretty big accomplishment that we did not see any decline whatsoever and stayed totally consistent through COVID. You know, looking at 2019, 88% of respondents had an overall good impression, and we maintained that 88% even as we kind of saw service delivery go through some drastic changes. So that's a pretty big, pretty big accomplishment to celebrate for sure. So now that we have all of those insights, what are the next steps? So city staff are reviewing the data. That includes identifying areas for further analysis and discussion, as well as celebrating the many successes that the results brought up. And the results will also assist in the 23 to 24 budget process. And additional information for anybody who would like it, including the full report from Polco, can be found on the city website. For anybody who is listening, that is www.rfcity.org/558/citizen-surveys. And that concludes my presentation. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has. Yes?
I just wonder, is this shopping, did that also include?
I'm sorry. Does the shopping also include restaurants or is that in a different part of the survey? Yeah, that's a great question. So let's see. I believe they did not specify on the survey. But based on the phrasing of the other categories, so we also have overall quality of business and service establishments and variety of business and service establishments. My feeling is that probably was intended just to encompass like retail, shopping. But they did not really exactly spell that out on the survey, so it's definitely possible that that could have been open to interpretation for some folks who were taking the survey. Okay, because I saw it in here and I'm not going to take time to figure out, but there was something, there was a pretty low rating around access to quality affordable food. And so that's why I was wondering if that's different. The rating was, I don't know exactly what it was, but it was lower than 80%. So that's why I wanted to just check on it. So anyway, that's what I was wondering. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Else have any?
More of a comment than than a question. It's interesting to see that there's a lot of takeaways in here, but the one that I just just draw my attention was our our 12-point dip in code enforcement, 60% down to 48%, which sort of reinforces our earlier actions here of being more proactive on code enforcement. So I think we knew intuitively that was coming. This reinforces it, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Miller, the part four, availability for quality food is at 63%, which tracks about the average of 60, 66, 72. So it's down, it's down statistically significant amount from the new two. So I think that it was a five or six percent is the statistical variation.
I believe it was 6%.
So because it's a random sample survey, you should be, you know, there, that is its column. There's statistically significant decline from 19 to 21. So that availability of affordable quality mental health care is down to 35%. And so again, I think, not that we're willing to settle for what everybody else has, but it's also, that is one of the values of the benchmarking is to look at that and go out, you know. Our first reaction is staff, oh my gosh, how can that be so low? And then you find out that's simpler. So it's, it is a national thing amongst the 600, which are not ranging the sample communities. So that's the other thing to be careful about on the benchmarking is. These are all communities that have proactively said, we want to know what our citizens think and go out and spend a fair amount of money to do so. So I would argue this, this is, for the most part, I think you could look at them as kind of proactive, high-quality service providing cities because they want to get feedback. So amongst those, it's no, it's basically not different significant there statistically than all the other communities. So then then that begs the question, boy, that's, I mean, that's a problem everywhere, right? Whereas with the transportation, amongst those groups, many who are similar are situated in ex-urban or suburban situation, they they feel statistically better affected by the transport than us. So I mean, that's a real thing to look at. So and I would just remind people that are curious and have want to make observations about this, that they find the search engine in PBS is really helpful. You can just type in food if you're interested in that, and it'll bring up all the times in the survey that food was mentioned. Cars, walking, park or library, whatever you're interested in, you can you can search that pretty easily. So staff will spend some time doing that too, looking through some of these, some of these trends. And we appreciate the council supporting our efforts to do this. I mean, it's a big effort. And it's something we think is provide some good values to us in discussions and hopefully for you when you make policy decisions.
I guess I have anything on this? Few more questions, or Catherine?
Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're in a closing council hearing, open to volunteering. A resolution operates especially assessment police powers under section 66 point, sorry, 0703 Wisconsin statute for benefit of River Falls Business Improvement District. And I believe it was Mr. Jolene Larson, Mr. Jolene Larson, Mr. Jolene Larson, Mr. Jolene Larson, here to give us from the bid board and talk to us about this.
Hi, my name is Jolene Larson. I live at 502 East Down Street, and I'm the current bid board chair. I have been here for a while. And I also am the general manager of Treasures From the Heart, Everest Treasures From the Heart. Tonight, we're looking at the resolution authorizing the bid assessment. And first of all, we want to thank staff and the city crew for all your help in 2021. Without wiring up the plans and helping us hang the baskets and putting up the garbage cans and putting all the benches and cleaning up Second Street Gardens, a lot of our programs wouldn't exist, and without all of your support, we wouldn't exist at all. We are not asking for any increase in our assessment. We are happy with what it is. And so I will highlight tonight some of the things that we've done in 2021. But first of all, I think you have to understand what our our task is. We are, our basic job is to augment, support the business retention and beautification of our core main street area. That is, we have an area that we are specifically attended to with constituencies, and that's all we do. To date, we've spent over $950,000 in the last 20 years just in that little area, which would be mostly historic Main Street. Our budget is about $45,000 a year. That's raised by assessment. Of that, 2,500 a year goes to the city for administration costs and the other 95% goes right back into the bid. In 2020 and 2021, as we all know, it has been an unusual situation. Dealing with COVID has made it extremely hard and it's changed the way business is being conducted in every single person's business entity, service industry across the board. I think you've seen that. We were living it and it hasn't changed much. We're hope, we're glad to be open and businesses returning. And businesses actually quite frankly have done very well and have pivoted really well in River Falls to serving their communities. And it's remarkable what has been accomplished. We have had several large projects in the works with businesses who have decided to take a slow and go approach. And mostly this is because, not only because of COVID, but the rise in business building costs. If you've gone to buy anything lately, it's a little bit spendy. Tight inventory, you've been hearing about it in the news and it is real. I was talking to two business owners yesterday who what they have in their businesses today, right now, is what they're expecting to have going into the holiday season. That's kind of scary if you're in business. And then you couple that with a very tight labor market. It's very hard to grow your business when you can't find help. You can't purchase materials to build your business and you don't know if you're going to have any inventory. So we're seeing a hold and go approach with many of the businesses. They're putting signs in. Our, our program basically is by side grants. We invest in the outside of the buildings and sign signage. But there are some folks that are doing some things carefully and slowly, and we see it kind of improving. We're also excited to announce that we are the main sponsor for the River Dazzle event, which happens the Friday after Thanksgiving. And that is full steam ahead. Shall We Grow will be taking place, the parade will be happening. And that is a huge retail event for our businesses, bringing many, many people from outside of town. We've also been planning a mural under the bridge overpass under there on the walkway. And we've been trying to work with the high school on that project. But because of COVID, we can't get the scale. It's just been a converging, you know, we can't get all the players to the table. So we are rethinking that and we're going to be hiring a, we're looking for doing requests for proposals and hopefully next spring we'll have a mural there. It's been budgeted and it's, we're ready for it. And we've been kind of frustrated, frustrated that we can't get it done, but that's on the board and we're moving ahead of that. The Second Street Gardens and the hanging baskets are, are kind of what we're known for. The Second Street Gardens have, have really become something, I think, I don't think people understand that those gardens take money and time and a lot of volunteer help. They don't just kind of happen. And so luckily we have a staff members act who has taken that over and kind of encourages the volunteers that keeps them with plants and the cities that are watering them and helping us with mulch. And I'm happy to say that that will continue. In 2021, we infused a small amount of cash. It was significant to us because of our budget, but we, it was $5,000. And we purchased gifts, certificates from all our constituents, no matter what business they were at, we went to every single door. And we gave them all to the 500 River Falls School District employees as a thing. We wanted to do two things. We wanted to kind of infuse some cash immediately into the, into the business community. We also want to recognize the school district for the work that they've done. And here, the evidence will show us that if it's a small enough gift certificate, they usually when they get refunded are added by two, are increased by two or three times that amount. So if, if it's a $10 gift certificate, it would be, most people will do $30 with the business. So the business got the immediate cash flow, but then secondary cash flow when they were, when they were brought into their businesses. It was a small gesture. We understand that, but it was well received. And we got many, many thank yous, not only from the school district, but from the businesses to actually went knocking on doors. We're a volunteer group, so we don't have an administrator or anybody that can do that. So the members ourselves, we just went out, took the cash out of our account and actually literally went and bought gift certificates because we don't know any other way to do it. We're kind of old school. And then just put them all together as okay as and delivered to the school district. So we're looking at maybe doing that again before the holiday season. We're also working, we also recently helped support cab and repair. Help them with their repair, the repair on their stage in Veterans Park. And each year we sponsor music in the park because that's such a great event. That's grown from one day to now three days of live music that brings a lot of people downtown. We recently improved a grant for Bros and that is one of those slow and go projects. He's getting everything together. And then we also did a side improvement for Bo John's in our last meeting. With the extension of the walkway completely around White Pathway now, which is excellent, I might add. We're working with the city staff and purchasing more trash receptacles and we expect more outdoor seating in 2022. And that's one of the, that's in our district. So we kind of look at that as the extension of the bid. With that, we really thank you for your support. Without you, you believing in us, we couldn't do what we do. You're all welcome to come to our meetings. We are meeting on the second Tuesday of the month. Now we're back in live, in person in City Hall, and it's at 8:30 in the morning. So if you've got any questions, let me know.
Any questions? No? Thanks, Jolie. Thanks for everything you guys do. Very appreciated. Okay, is there anybody else in the audience that has anything about this they'd like to talk about or ask? Otherwise, I'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing and take a motion on this.
Mayor, make a motion. Make a motion. We approve the resolution authorizing special police powers for the River Falls Bit Board. Second.
First and second, questions or comments on this? All in favor? Okay, I will close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2020-09. This ordinance is appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of City River Falls for the year 2020. And this is the first reading. Is there anybody in the audience that has anything to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing. And then does the council have any questions about this? Okay. Move on. I'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2021-10. This is ordinance of many section 17.104.040 of the initial code relating special youth permits. There again, this is the first reading. Is there anybody in the audience in there that'd like to say about this? I'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing for questions from the council on this one. Yep, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank the plan commission for adopting some of what I talked about regarding community engagement using the sign. I do believe that there's more we can develop in the future, but I think we're moving in the right direction slowly. Still fast through most studies in Wisconsin, but it is a tremendous responsibility to determine what's fall by us to join our city. And I think there's a lot to discuss in the future for how we would engage with the educational aspect. As you know, we are required to give away our power to council to the plan commission. And although we've got a couple of our members in our council on the plan commission, the rest of them are more likely to come and go, not have the same educational aspect available to them. So I'm looking at how can our community adopt guidelines and standards under state power for our city within our own community, like other cities have done. And what that would mean to us as a city. The council should consider working with the department to implement guidelines and develop community standards. Some of the community standards I was looking at that could be adopted in the future would be, what are the traffic impacts that would cause by the S U P? What would cause unnecessary nuisances from the S U P? Would the S U P meet safety standards of our community via EMS and crowd size? Would the S U P have noise, dust, or odor problems? Will the S U P overheard in water and sewer services? Will the S U P interfere with the development of joint properties? Will the S U P develop, devalue nearby properties? And will the S U P result in negative environmental impacts to our city that would interfere with our future comprehensive plan and development of our river system? These are questions I think that we can adopt over a period of time, like they're working with each other to discover. There is one thing I was curious of what the rest of the council thinks that we could, we could potentially face tonight or we could leave it. And that is the, the mailing that we send to residents within property. And you know, in our adopted version, it says 300 feet. I think it'd be appropriate to move to 500 feet because of things that can impact those other joining behaviors such as noise, dust, odor, potential nuisances that would come from one end to another that we haven't discussed. Now, there are many cities that add 500 feet. And I'd like to know what other people think as far as how they feel about that.
Those are just questions for tonight, this first reading. So we can go on all that next meeting. Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to answer? Okay, well, next we'll close the council hearing and open up the public, a public hearing on ordinance 2020-11. We're identifying the readjustment of orders in automatic district for the purpose of state statute 62.081. There again, this is the first reading. Is there anybody in the audience that has anything to say about this? Okay, we will close the, we will close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing for questions on this. Are you questions? No? Okay. We'll go on to the consent agenda. First thing is nodment of the following minutes. Library Board from 9/13, River Falls Housing Authority from 9/8, the Plan Commission from 9/7, the Parker High Advisory Board from 9/15, the Utility Advisory Board from 8/16, the WCWBF from 7/22 and 8/19, the Historic Preservation Commission from 9/8. Next one is the resolution or a bid for North Interceptor Sewer Extension and Kinnick River Lift Station elimination to A1 estimating. This one is the resolution approving proposal for construction services on the North Intercept Sewer Extension and the Kinnick River Lift Station elimination from TKDA. Next is resolution including the 2022 through 2025 contracts between the City of River Falls and the City of River Falls Police Department Employees Association. Next one is resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute contracts for the bicycle and pedestrian plan. Next one is resolution approving development agreement. Addendum number two with Keys Highway LLC for the Hyatt View Meadows subdivision. Next one is resolution approving the developers agreement with Call the Donna Incorporated. Next one is resolution approving the purchase agreement with Call the Donna Incorporated. Does anybody want to call anything? Okay, otherwise I'll take a motion on the rest. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, move approval of consent agenda items 7A through G and 8 through 14.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor? I have 7A through H.
I got 8A through G. No.
I got 0G.
Am I missing one? What do you have?
G is Plan Commission 97.
No, let's see for us. We got the library board from 9/13. A is library, yep. B is housing, yep.
The agenda that you have is slightly different than what I was looking at from than I pulled down from the website, but you can, you can approve what you have because it's less than the ones that I have on, on post. So you're welcome to within the rules I do so. And we'll get, if there's any correction, we'll get it the next meeting.
Okay, so what Diane said was fine?
Yes. Sorry for getting.
No, that's fine. For a second, there was no questions or comments, so all in favor?
I am opposed.
Okay, next we move on to council reports for September.
This is the council reports for September 2021. Non-own fund revenues for the end of September were $8,987,527 or 78% of budgeted revenues. Revenues for September include $14,125 in billing permanent revenue. Expenditures for the same period were $8,883,405 or 77% of budgeted expenses. Expenses for September included $89,400 for the 2021 Route and Seal Street Program. Net revenues over expenditures as of September 30th, 2021 were $104,122.
Thanks, Megan. Hey, I got one point I'd like to make. I'd like to appoint Mr. Mike Wolsey to fill the vacancy on our Plan Commission through May of 2023.
Move approval of the mayor's appointment.
Second. First and second, any questions? All in favor?
I am opposed. Mr. Mayor, before you get that, that famous last motion, would you allow me to make a couple quick announcements?
Yes.
On your section. Needing parking on city streets resumes November 1st and runs nightly through March 31st. This is enforced between 1 AM and 6 AM. Vehicles are parked, must be parked on the hot numbered side of the street on hot dates and even numbered side on the even dates unless other no parking regulations are in effect during that time. Vehicles in violation may be taken in tow for snow, road, street maintenance, and other public safety needs. The ordinance is enforced regardless of other conditions. So it doesn't have to seem in order for you to need to park on odd even. If you have questions related to anything regarding this ordinance, it's easy as just to call the police department by emergency number, which is 715-425-099. And I do want to recognize that River Falls again received national recognition from the Department of Energy's National Renewable Energy Laboratory for renewable energy. And this is really an award for the community because it's through voluntary participation in our renewable energy programs. So we're, our, our utilities are top 10 utility across the nation. We were third in the nation for green power participation and fifth nationally for the community's green power sales rate. So we've been in that at least one top 10 ranking since 2004, when these came along, with the exception of the second year of 2005. So good work by the community of City River Falls. And we're happy as the utility to try to provide these opportunities. And we're going to catch up to Portland and, and assume and so. I think it was Portland anyways. Gosh, I know who our archrival is, but some, some of those communities are not exactly voluntary participants. So they have, they have a higher required participation rate in their community. This is based on voluntary participation. So people are making the choice to do that. So thanks for letting me make those two announcements.
Mr. Mayor, if I may indulge you just a second. I apologize. I should have made this during public comment. Jolene reminded me when she had to talk about the bid board. And twice a year, the River Falls Riverdance Club cleans up Veterans Park. We just cleaned up this year for the fall and talked to the band. I want to recognize staff member Mike Stifter for his help. He comes in every time on Saturday, gives us his personal time to help us do that on a two-hour project and it's very, very much appreciated. Mike happens to be a lion, but we can make him a hundred parian if he'd like to. So thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. I want to get that number. Thank you. That's all I have. Okay, move to adjourn.
Second.
First and second to adjourn, all in favor? First and second to adjourn, all in favor?
I am.
Okay, we are adjourned.